Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Here, present.
Hirschbein.
Present.
Hudson has not arrived. Commissioner Lo.
Present.
Middleton.
Present.
Mr. Kellergine.
Present.
Chair Wermrich.
Present, and Commissioner Hudson is excused.
Okay.
Okay, can we have a staff report regarding the posting of the agenda?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, July the 6th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
And do commissioners have any revisions to the agenda?
My only point would be that with respect to the minutes of May 10, I will have to abstain because I wasn't present.
Which item?
The approval of the minutes.
And I will have to do the same, I was not present.
And I was not present either.
Do we have enough to...
Based on that, you do not have a quorum to approve the minutes.
So we'll hold the minutes, we'll hold the minutes over. Public comments, time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on the consent calendar and non-public hearing items and items of general interest within the subject manner of and jurisdiction of the commission. If you wish to speak, you have three minutes. Please come forward and state your name.
Madam Chair, you might also announce to the public that the two items that we have on the agenda are not public hearing items today, and so it's advised those who wish to speak should speak under the public comments portion here at the beginning of the agenda.
Please be so advised.
My name is Judy Deartrack. I am a candidate for city council. You may see me a little more often than normal on some of what I consider to be the core issues for the city. One reason for my speaking today is I want to be sure, because these are televised, that the general public is aware there is a joint session between the city council and the Planning Commission on what is called the PDD study, or the PDD study findings and recommendations. Apart from what I understand, that is set for July 20th, next Thursday, at 6:00 PM, I believe, Mr. Fag. And this is very important to the general public, because it is, from what I understand, I believe that there were 68 recommendations from the PDD subcommittee that are before the joint council. It impinges directly upon the commercial permits, how the city is processing the commercial permits, and how they will continue to process commercial permits. This is of particular interest to the general public, to developers, to investors, and to environmental people. All of the recommendations impinge upon important public rights. So it is a call to participate and be here for that. I also want to give a special notice to People for Proper Planning. This was a litigation outcome where People for Proper Planning entered a settlement agreement with the city and with Mr. John Westman to requisition a study of commercial permits and bring it forward for recommendations. So many times, the people that litigate against the city are criticized for slowing things down and not giving anything of benefit back to the community, but this is one of many sterling examples of where the outcome of this includes recommendations that we are again looking at the general plan, how that plan serves us, the zoning scheme, whether that's been followed, to the extent it has been broken from, what are the repercussions of that, what are we going to do about fixing that, and whether major recommendations and changes will occur to the zoning scheme for the city. One of the outcomes of the study is that when there was a general plan update in 2007, there were certain fundamental changes to the underlying zoning scheme that were never made to create the consistency between the general plan classification for a particular lot development and the zoning scheme that implemented the general plan. And the other portion of the study that I thought was particularly telling is that the city has definitely drifted from the vision and the standards of the general plan in terms of the findings that the lot development as it occurs on a case-by-case basis, is it in fact serving the long-term interest of the city? Is it an appropriate fit into the actual district? Are we consistently violating some of the core principles of public protection, such as height, setbacks, open space, parking? And if we have drifted in our vision, and if we have begun to consistently set aside public rights, what is necessary to return? What are the values that we most cherish in this situation, and how do we get back to square one? Thank you very much. I really want to thank both of the Planning Commission and the city council. There's been a lot of hard work on your part, and it is appreciated by all.
Next. Just a reminder, if you're here on either 3A or 3B, this is your chance to speak on those items. There will not be a public hearing on either of those items.
Frank Tyson, I'll make it very short. I just want to thank the Planning Commission for its work, both as members of them have served on the ALHAC committee on the PDD, and both at the commission in total for accepting all the recommendations of that ALHAC committee, which worked very hard for six and seven months, and was guided very expertly by the planning director who was able to, it's like herding a group of cats, but he did a great job on it, and it worked out very well. And of course, this next week, we'll have a meeting together with the city council, and hopefully we'll get all these recommendations in action. Now, the only problem we still face, we still have some of the old PDDs around, some of them are awful, and some of them actually are being constructed or planned right now, others will still be coming up for renewals, and hopefully, well, before the whole town is gone, there's nothing left to develop, hopefully we'll be able to catch some of those before, because some of them have absolutely no public, no real public benefits, and some of them are really awful, they're cheek-to-jowl, and so we really hope that you...
Frank, can you speak up?
Have you heard anything I said?
A little bit of it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I start over again, or?
No, no.
Well, I basically want to, I basically wanted to thank you for your work and the work of the subcommittee on trying to rein in the runaway PDD process, and I'm looking forward to next week when you'll be meeting together with the council, and also, but I am still concerned about some of the old PDD, some of them, well, is now going through the process, which is actually 11 years old, and I mean, that should have been caught at one point, but hopefully we can catch some of the real bad ones still and try to get them in line with, better in line with what our city really deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Again, if you're an applicant on either of the two items, this, on 3A or 3B, this is your chance to speak. Thank you. We're going to proceed to new business, because there are no public hearing items. And when the planning director returns, we're going to proceed with 3A, which is Takwitz Canyon Investors LLC, for a proposal to remodel the courtyard at Palm Springs, including the demolition of three buildings, construction of two multi-tenant commercial buildings, and improvement of the landscape and hardscape areas at 601-789 East Takwitz Canyon Way, Zone REO, Section 14, specific plan. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, what you have before you here is a major architectural application to do a major remodel of the courtyard project on East Takwitz Canyon Way. This project, as you can see in the site plan on the screen in front of you, would remove the small one-story buildings at the front of the development, which is highlighted with the red dotted line. It would leave the movie theaters, the bank, and then the multi-story office building behind. It would remove about 20,000 square feet and then replace it with two brand-new buildings of an equal square footage, so there is no change in the overall square footage of the development. In terms of the Section 14 specific plan, where the project is located, the proposed use for restaurant and commercial use is consistent with the REO, retail entertainment office land use designation of the Section 14 plan. And then in terms of the development standards, the proposed new buildings are consistent with the height, setbacks, floor area ratio, and parking requirements that are in place. In terms of the site plan, let me just walk that, walk you through that briefly here at the beginning of the presentation. As I had mentioned, it does involve the construction of two new buildings. What is significant about this is it brings those buildings up to the street level. If you're familiar with the project, as it currently stands, the buildings are depressed, and that has been an issue in terms of leasing the tenant spaces and making those active uses. The applicant is proposing two buildings that would be on either side of a wider courtyard in the center of the project that is centered on the office building behind. What that does is it then brings those buildings up to the level of the street, and then that center courtyard steps down over a series of steps to the back, which is depressed below the level of the street. And so what that does is it does create additional openings for pedestrians to easily go from the parking structure to the pedestrian sidewalk in front, and opens up the project, so it brings people in off of the street as well. So the overall purpose of that is to enhance pedestrian activity for the project and to make circulation through the project itself much more successful. The landscape plan here shows the changes that are proposed with the new buildings. There will be new landscaping in front of the project. The existing Washingtonias will remain in place there along the street edge. They will be adding six date palm trees on the other side of the public sidewalk in front of the new buildings to complement that. And then there is also new landscaping proposed in front of the bank and the movie theater, and then in the pedestrian areas around the two new buildings. This detail here just shows some of the hardscape treatments for the project itself, the differentiation in the paving materials for the pedestrian areas, the use of lighting, in-ground lighting for the passageways from the garage to the central courtyard area to help brighten those areas and lead pedestrians from the garage to the commercial spaces. Let's see, this is one of the elevations of the proposed buildings, showing the materials and the form of the roof and the form of the building itself. Again, these are one-story buildings. The sweeping roof structure that you see there comes right up to the 35-foot height limit. I believe generally, the main plane of the roof element is about 22 feet in height, and I'll ask the applicant to address that, if there are questions in terms of the height of the building itself. Primary material on the front of the building is a stone veneer. We do have the sample and material boards over here to my left, and we can pass those around to the Planning Commission if you'd like to see those up close, so I'll get those in just a moment for you. And then finally, we have some 3D renderings of the proposed project. The image on the lower right-hand corner gives you an overview in terms of how the new buildings fit within the existing complex, and gives you the appearance in terms of their mass and scale relative to the existing buildings. The project went before the Architectural Advisory Committee three times. I've been asked to go through in detail the comments that were made during those meetings. The project first went to the Architectural Advisory Committee on March the 6th. During that meeting, the following comments were made by the members of the Architectural Advisory Committee. There was a comment to introduce shade trees into the central courtyard area for the benefit of pedestrians. There was also a question about the justification for the sweeping roof form in terms of how that relates to the architecture of the rest of the complex. There was a request to add more horizontal elements into the design of the facades, as they were reading as being very vertical in their appearance. Also, it was commented that the project was out of scale. Originally, the project, I believe, was about 39 feet in height. The applicant has since reduced the height of the project to be in conformance with our height limits for that particular area within the Section 14 plan. Also, there was a comment made that there was a need to study the architectural vocabulary of the existing buildings and to better integrate the forms... of the existing buildings, and to better integrate the forms and the materials of the existing buildings with the new buildings. And there was also a comment made that the massing in the vertical composition needs more study. At the conclusion of their comments, the AAC voted to continue the item to a date uncertain, with direction to the applicant to work on the issues that had been presented at that meeting. The applicant modified the application submittal based on those comments, and went back to the Architectural Advisory Committee on April the 3rd. During that meeting, the following comments were made relative to the project. There was concern about access to the theater. There was a comment made that the complexity of forms is too ambiguous, the mass is too large. It was also commented that the project is overscaled. The landscape needs to relate better to the pedestrian use, and I think they were speaking specifically at the front of the project, thinking of how that related to the public sidewalk and to some of the areas that they have in front for outdoor dining. In addition, there was concern about the use of cypress trees. That was one of the treatments in one of the early landscape plans. I believe that those have been completely removed from the project. I'm looking at Tom, and he's nodding and saying yes. There was also a concern in terms of the location of the proposed fire pits and the seating around those, adjacent to the public sidewalk on Takwitz.
What was that concern?
There was a concern about the location of proposed fire pits-
Right. What was the concern?
That they were too close to the public sidewalk. There needed to be greater separation between those areas. Also, there was a comment that the proposed buildings did not relate to the village feel of Palm Springs. The committee members also commented that they were in favor of the site plan as it was proposed, as it helped to activate the street. They didn't really have any issues in terms of how it was laid out, and they commended the applicant for the site plan, but they were still concerned with the proposed material selection. So based on that, at the April 3rd meeting, the AAC voted to deny the project. The applicant then again made additional revisions to the project, and went back to the Architectural Advisory Committee on June the 19th. On the 19th, the AAC recommended approval of the project, but with eight conditions, and I'll go through those conditions with you right now. First of all, condition number one is relative to the urban design. They said that the urban design needs further evaluation. Consider additional overhangs for shade and pedestrian amenities through the site, as well as a second row of trees along the front of the buildings, again, to enhance the pedestrian and provide shade for pedestrians. Secondly, landscape enhancements are needed up against the fronts of the buildings and along the sides of the buildings. The fascia is too massive and the, and complex below the clear-story windows, so what they're looking for is to simplify the building elevations and materials. They also put a condition relative to the columns or vertical elements on the front facade, that they are not pedestrian scaled, and that there needs to be additional scale elements brought into the design that relate to pedestrian scale. Also, there was a condition relative to the distances between the new and existing buildings, to review those carefully due to the mass and size of the proposed structures. I think in particular, they were looking at the area behind, between the office building and the new structures, making sure that there was adequate separation between those. There was also a condition that the central courtyard needs to be softened with additional landscape, and feel like less of a pass-through space. And then finally, the last condition of approval is that the busyness of the architecture needs further evaluation, to reduce the materials, simplify the shapes and the forms. So those were the eight conditions of approval that were imposed by the Architectural Advisory Committee. What I might recommend to you, even though this is not a public hearing, that perhaps if we could have the applicant talk about the changes that they've made since the June 19th Architectural Advisory Committee, I think that would be helpful for the Planning Commission members to have an understanding of what changes have been made. In summary, I'll just conclude my comments by saying, again, it does comply with the development standards in terms of height, setbacks, floor ratio, parking. However, there are concerns, as you can see from the conditions imposed by the AAC, relative to its compliance with the city's architectural criteria. So that concludes my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before I have the applicant come up and explain the changes, what I'd like to do is go around for question, only questions for staff at this point, and limited, and start with Commissioner Hirschbein, and go around.
Thank you. I have two questions. I read through, we're a little bit of a disadvantage here, because we have not seen, we're not able to compare what AAC's last review set of drawings were in this one. So other than the applicant describing what was changed, you know, we don't really have any way of, of understanding what those changes were, and I was hoping that maybe someone from staff could do that. I'm just suggesting that. That's one. And then the second one is, is the, is the decision of Planning Commission appealable?
Yes. Major architectural applications, when they're a standalone application, are final action at the Planning Commission. So any action that you take at the Planning Commission would be appealable to City Council.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so those are my two questions.
My one question is regarding Section 14, Flynn. Since this is Section 14, and it seems to be, there is a Section 14 Specific Plan in which this is located, to what extent will the tribe have an input into this process?
Let's see. If I remember correctly, the tribe has already given input on the project. Let me just go through the background materials. And I'll apologize that Mr. Newell is the one who wrote the staff report, but we have him off at training today, so I'm the backup here for you. I believe the tribe has reviewed the project and had recommended approval of it, but just give me a moment, and I'll get that under back for you.
Flynn, you already answered my question on height and setbacks, and that this conforms. My other question. Recently, we and then City Council approved changes to extensions of time. For a project such as this, which is a remodel, are there any limitations on the extensions of time for this project? Or if we approve it, do they have an entitlement that lasts essentially forever?
No. No. With your approval of this major architectural application, it would be subject to the new ordinance that was just recently approved by City Council. So that gives them two years to secure the building permit and to begin construction.
And a limit of no more than two years-
Correct.
-after that, to begin the project.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have the same concerns that Michael does, for trying to compare something to nothing, and it's very difficult to decide, and obviously, it'll be interesting to hear the applicant's discussion in terms of what they've done relative to the AAC's recommendations, but we really don't have anything to look at to see what the changes, whether the changes really met the original plan versus this plan. The other question I've got is, was there any discussion of solar in this project at all?
No, there was not a discussion of solar.
Great, thank you.
I've got a series of questions. I'll defer my architectural ones until we get to the applicant's input and the general discussion going, but I do have some other questions about the site plan itself. As I understand it, the parking will all, can everybody hear me? Is this close enough? The parking will all be at the rear of the, utilize the existing parking at the rear of the office building?
Correct. The existing parking remains in place.
I'm a little concerned about the distance in some of those, particularly if you have to park on the upper level. You'll have to go down, down steps, and then up steps, and just to get to these restaurants, and I'm concerned that that's going to be, restaurants are really sensitive to the adjacency of parking. Is staff convinced that that situation is workable, or will be successful?
Considering the layout of the complex currently, while the buildings are at grade, still, they are the same distance away. I mean, there's no change in the distance of the parking area. With the central courtyard, in addition to the stairs going up, you also have ramps, so you'll be able to still easily access the restaurants at the front of the complex. Keep in mind that there's also spaces there at the central courtyard as well, so either of those can be used as restaurant or commercial spaces. So the tenant spaces don't just face Takwitz. There's also internal, internally facing spaces.
That's a question I have, is, what are we doing to increase the visibility of the rest, I guess it's restaurant spaces that would be in the back?
Either restaurant or commercial.
Okay. So it'd be either a difficult-to-see restaurant, or it could, that could be commercial office.
Correct.
Would it be reasonable to require some sort of bridge from the, one of the breezeways that's come in from the upper level of the parking structure, so that people would be coming, they wouldn't have to go down and then back up, and that would help add some design flair to the, actually, the interior plaza?
If it is felt by the Planning Commission that the addition of a bridge would help it comply with our architectural review criteria, then you would be able to add that as a condition of approval.
I'd like to see some discussion, maybe we don't have to have it done, maybe the applicant can get there, about how we're activating that remaining lower courtyard. It's kind of a ghost town today, and we certainly, I really appreciate the site plan, which drawing, drawing the uses up to Takwitz, but I'm still concerned about whether that lower courtyard is going to get any use. How are we going to raise the site? Is it going to be on fill?
I'm assuming that yes, they will have to do fill on the interior of the site.
Do you know where the fill is coming from? Or are you just-
I do not. And again, keep in mind that the building does step down the site, so it's not filling the entire void there.
Right, but it'd have to come up a half level.
Yeah.
Finally, I'm concerned about the access to the theater, which I think the planning, or the Architectural Committee raised, and particularly, the access to the theater during construction. We want to make sure that somehow they're, that you can get from the parking lots to the theater, and see what ways we can do that. Those are my comments and concerns, I think.
I have a couple at this point. One is, can you walk me, if I was a handicapped person in a wheelchair, Flynn, can you just show me the paths that I can get from the parking to the, the front and to the theater? Knowing that someone who's handicapped can't get there now, I don't think can get there now, but-
So looking here on this image, we have our parking structure here. Here is the exit from the parking structure. This is the three-story office building located here. So coming through this passageway here, this is all level to this point. We have a ramp which transposes that half level up to the street level here, and then they come out here to the level of the street. So that would be the path of travel either here or here.
Are there steps from the parking deck, the lower parking deck?
I believe there's also a ramp there currently, and I may be mistaken, but for some reason, that sticks in my mind, is that is there currently.
And the access from the bank parking to this complex?
The access from the bank parking-
Is still downstairs?
Yeah, I still believe that you can come out through here, through the central courtyard.
But it's stairs.
There has to be ADA access. It is required.
Okay. And when this was built, ADA hadn't been passed in 1980?
It was probably under different standards then than it is today, but that's one of the things that Building and Safety would verify, is compliance with ADA requirements.
Is the parking lot also going to limit it to the bank?
This lot here?
Yeah.
That would be a question for the applicant.
I don't believe it is now.
No, it's not.
Okay. A couple, two other questions. Is this the new rendering, and is it different than what we saw in our package? Did we get in our package the last AAC rendering, and what was put on our desks today is the new rendering?
What you received in your package was an updated set of drawings post AAC, and then what was distributed today was given by the applicant to help you understand the colors and materials on the front elevations of the buildings.
And then, the last question is that this is a building by a, or several of the buildings are buildings by a famous local architect, by Don Wexler. The bank building is by Wexler. All of the buildings that'd be removed in the buildings behind it, I don't believe the theater was, but there was some homage to Wexler in the theater building using, some use of the same materials. In our purview, as we look at this, and, and I did find out a little bit of Mr. Wex, what might have been Mr. Wexler's opinions, he never agreed with the reduc, with the step down, and thought that the complex would fail. I think he would support bringing it up. But I'm very concerned that what we get has some reference to what's currently existing, and also a reference to Takwitz Plaza and the Hugh Capter buildings that are across the street. Is that something that the AAC looked at? Is that the basis of their timeless architecture comments, that in some sense, this needs to fit in?
Yes, that was a concern of the AAC, and was referenced several times, in terms of how the new buildings will fit in with the existing complex, the architecture, looking at the color and materials that are used in the project, looking at the forms of the project. So those were all discussions that were had at the AAC meetings.
Thank you. At this point, I think the applicant can come up and explain some of the changes that they've made from the last AAC meeting, and if anybody would like to-
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can we ask the applicant to go through each of the eight items?
Yes, we can ask them to go through each of the eight items. What I would like to do is pass the material board around, if we could do that, just so we can have a chance to see those.
So is that that- Okay, that does not relate either to this drawing or this photograph.
Well, this is the same materials.
But it's completely, it's completely blocked out differently.
Yeah, I agree, this is the same sideboard, it's just the material company uses their standard sample board.
So is it meant to look like this?
It's going to look like this, it's going to look like this with these materials.
Okay, this photo-
This is the three-inch, this is the six-inch, and that's the nine-inch material.
This photo is different from the board and the image.
Hold on a second. If we can have this conversation as a public conversation-
Well, I'm pointing out is that we're not getting complete information.
But would you, maybe if you hold it over there and point it out, and we can-
Sorry.
It's disruptive to have it be a private conversation.
I apologize. There's just a discrepancy of information here, and I was trying to sort it through it.
Okay, maybe as we pass these around, if, then you can keep them with you too, and you can present, you can use those in your presentation as well. And would you introduce yourself?
Thank you, ma'am. My name is William Azalino. I'm the architect for the project. To respond to the changes and questions from committee, I'll sort, go through these items, and if you have questions, I'll try to address them as we go through. The request was consideration of additional overhangs for shade and pedestrian reward to the site, as well of a second set freeze along the building. We've increased the landscaping adjacent to the building to provide additional shade trees along both the street and in the interior courtyard.
Could you point those out to us?
Sorry?
Could you, could you point those out to us?
Sure.
Does the site plan vary from what we have in our package?
Tom, I think probably the landscape questions I'll have Tom Dossi answer, because it's his area of expertise, and so I'll let Tom. There's, you can do it on their board there.
In terms of our response to the AAC's question about some additional trees to be, to create a second layer, what we've done, and there may be a blow-up of the streetscape, but the way the design works along Takwitz, there's the existing Washingtonia palms, they're approximately- approximately 60 feet in height. So, one of the concerns from the AAC was to create another layer of trees to mitigate some of the heights of the proposed building. So, what we did is in the central courtyard, the public space, in the rear courtyard, we've used date palms at that location. So, along the facade or the front of the building, near the outdoor dining areas and setback from Talkwitz, we've included six additional date palm trees. So, if you look at the elevation view that was provided in that additional package today, you'll see an example of those three trees. So, those date palms help, again, mitigate the height but also provide a secondary level of landscape between the curb and the building itself. The other area there was a question is to add additional landscape around the buildings and the courtyard. So, additional planters have been added both around the outdoor dining areas and adjacent to the building and then also in the central courtyard. So, the idea is, and we've got a materials and a site furnishings board, I think that was passed around, that shows, you know, the actual informal public seating that will occur in the central courtyard. The concept was, we had this grade change that occurs right now, as you know, the buildings sit lower and then there's steps that lead down. So, in the redesign of the project, and this includes from the parking area itself, the height of the risers and the length of the tread of those steps are almost like you're going down into a basement. They're like six and 12. So, we took the liberty when we were going through the grading, working with the engineers and designing the hardscape to make that access much more, improve the ability for handicap, but also make it easier for pedestrians to come, you know, both from the parking structure or go back to the structure. So, starting at the parking structure, we've actually, on one end of the parking, access from the parking lot, there's a ramp. On the other end, there's steps. So, we've widened those out. We've increased the width of the steps. We've even added an intermediate landing so it's not like you're going down into a basement there. So, we've improved the access and provided both ramps and steps where the grade allowed us. This area has steps and a ramp. This location to the west just has steps, but we've created an intermediate landing for those steps so you don't have seven or eight steps just in a row. Then, as you enter to the courtyard, as you remember if you visited the site, in the center areas of those courtyards, you know, we have the roof that comes over and then there's these large kind of monolithic planters. So, we wanted to improve the pedestrians' experience from the parking structure and lead people, you know, to the fronts as well as, these are all restaurants or possible restaurants facing the rear as well. So, we added along some of the blank walls of the existing architecture, we've created these curvilinear-shaped planters and the idea is we want to lead people through. So, the combination of the curved in-ground landscape areas as well as the lighting begin to lead people through the central plaza area. Now, this indication of color that's different than the paving, that indicates the overhang of the rear building. So, you can see our actual courtyard area that's exposed is somewhat narrower than, than the actual building footprint. So, then as you lead from the parking structure, you come through, we created this public plaza in the center here that will include a fire pit, informal furnishings, and then it will have the four date palms with lighting attached to that. And then...
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So, one of the nicest features of the existing front buildings is the very deep overhangs as you walk through. Looking at that design, am I to read that there are no overhangs over the two front buildings as you walk up into that courtyard? On all of the buildings?
Yeah, the existing buildings, the narrowest, the narrowest... The narrowest overhang of the exist, of the new building as opposed to the old building. The old buildings had between four and five-foot overhangs in general. The narrowest overhang on the building at present is now five feet and it expands out to as much as 15, 15 to 19 feet.
Can you show us where those overhangs are?
Probably easiest to show you on, yeah, I'll do it on this one. I don't know what you can see, that's part of the problem. If you look on here, we have an approximately 12-foot overhang here that goes to about 15 feet at this point. It stays at about 15 feet across the front of the buildings. Then, this overhang here comes out nine feet over the front of the buildings. It hangs as a five feet all the way around. We have a five-foot overhang all the way along this side of the building. At the back, we have no overhang at this portion. At this portion, we have approximately a 12-foot deep overhang. At this portion, again, we have, it's really about a two-foot overhang. Then, it goes back to five feet all the way along here and then it tapers from about five feet to about 12 feet here and runs about 12 feet across the entire front of the building here.
Thank you.
And in addition, what we have added is we've got an overhead series of canopies which provide shade through the center of the courtyard, which you can see, three of in this rendering, there are actually four of them. And you can see them again in this overhead here, you can see the four suspended canopies. So, a good portion of the, of the walking path throughout the year is actually shaded and the other thing about this particular project is this is the north side of the project. So, it's pretty much always in shade all year round anyway so that the overhangs are simply an addition. And the area that you're actually exposed to walking in sun, even in the middle of July, is about a 50-foot section here and about a 50-foot section there. So, it's really quite shaded the entire walkway. That's sort of the first two commentaries. In terms of the facade, it was too massive and complex below the clear-story windows and needed further evaluation. What we had had was a number of elements on that facade previously, including some coining at the bottom of them that extended up about five feet. They felt that was somewhat inconsistent with Wexler's original design, which took his concrete block materials continuously to grade. So, we removed all of the coining all the way around the building. We brought the stone back down to grade.
All the way?
Like a wainscot. Probably better, you know, so it's, we had a five-foot wainscot at various points around the building at the major columns. We removed that and carried the stone. We also increased the scale of the stone to match that of the existing Wexler buildings at about eight to nine inches in terms of height. So, that was the changes to the main facade. We also dropped some materials on the facade and simplified them at the same time as we did that. In terms of the columns and chimney stacks, we reduced, there are two chimney stacks for the restaurant, one on each corner here, which we reduced in height so that they're basically...
Can you point out those on this?
Yeah, I was just gonna, okay, happy to point it out on that one.
I don't think we have that on our screens.
It's, oops, is this little, now this little stack here and here, little stack here. They were much taller previously and they're now, it would actually, you'll hardly see them actually from the street now.
Does anybody else need to see where they are? Do you have a sense of that? Okay.
I have a sense of that. So, yeah, that one and that one, right. Okay. They're now about two and a half feet above the roof is all. They'll comply with, they'll comply, comply with code if there's a gas fireplace. That's all that they were for. The distances between the buildings and the existing buildings, we've maintained the existing footprint of the existing buildings except that in here, we've widened the two buildings apart. We previously had three buildings. We now only have two. So, we've taken some of that additional space and provided a much wider courtyard between the two sets of buildings, wider than was previously afforded. At the back of the buildings, we're at the same setback as the existing buildings are. So, once again, it won't be any closer to the existing two-story office building than the existing structures are right now.
If I was at the back entering that bill, say the first building you've replacing from the back?
Uh-huh.
Am I at street, or am I at the garage level there?
Yes. Well, you're actually, the entire complex is actually slightly below the garage level as well. It's, the garage is, let's say, two feet up and street is another three feet up from that, just to give you an idea. So, this was, let's call it plus five feet.
Mm-hmm.
This is minus five feet or zero, at zero. The garage is actually about plus two, two and a half.
But it, but I would be at the same grade as the retrained office building at the other side.
Correct. Yes, we have a uniform level courtyard at the back as it is now. What we've done is we've enhanced that courtyard in order to make it a more livable space. What we've done is we've introduced fire pits, outdoor usage, we've introduced some tables and an actual gas fireplace. So, people have some seating space that they can work outdoors if they want and meet with friends informally, you know...
And if I was just going to the theater, how would I travel?
You would come in from, from here and just walk either up the steps or up the ramp and right over to the, right over to the theater.
You couldn't go to the, to the right, like you do today?
You can, you can go this way around if you want.
No.
You can't go through here because this is a service area. It always has been a service area.
It's the main entrance, the main pathway to the theater now.
Well, that's why people have been using it, but it's really is a service area and with restaurants, it will now be more, will now be closed off.
Interesting.
Because you'll have restaurant garbage and gas meters and other elements back there for servicing the office building, servicing the buildings.
The access to the theater is going to become more circuitous.
It's going to become, yes, more circuitous by about 60 feet in total length. So, walking across this room is not too much different than what you'd be going around in additional length.
I think you'd want to move the entrance, the entrance to the theater is on the side, right?
I'm sorry?
Change the theater entrance to the front if you're going to do it that way.
Yeah, that's, that's, the theaters have seen this plan and they're content with it. They don't have any issues with it. And whether they're going to, they're also renovating their theater on the interior, whether they're going to move their box office to the front, I don't know. That's up to whatever they do with their own plan, but they, they have seen this design and are okay with it. Yeah, yeah, we've, we've adjusted the front entrance points as well. We've now added a staircase that's angled on this area. We've added a firewall, fire pit edge to it so it has some indirect and soft lighting at night to lead you down into the theaters. And we've intentionally angled the building so that people can see the theater rather than having the corner cut off. It highlights the theater as people are coming down the street and sort of frames the entrance to the theater.
At this point, people have been asking questions and just go ahead. Commissioner Donenfeld was first.
I have an architecture question for you because I was, I think I was at the first AAC meeting when you first came up with the design. And I want to preface what I have to say by the fact that I am truly excited about the fact that something's being, being done to what has been a very stale vacant space for an awful long time. And I can understand where the theaters are very interested in enhancing this experience for their sake. So, I really appreciate what you're trying to do. But what I don't understand is, and I think what's causing the AAC so much angst and perhaps is commissioned if we, as we start talking about it, the massing and the size of the new buildings are something that we're not used to seeing, particularly along Talkwitz. And I was wondering, as an architect, what your philosophy and thinking was behind these sort of very elaborate silhouettes of buildings that go quite high in comparison to what's around them except for the bank building and these sort of very unusual shaped, very prominent roof lines? What was your thinking about that? Because when I look at it, quite frankly, I think of either an airport or a convention center, much larger structures. And I can understand you want some pop here. You want some people to be attracted to the space and they'll get into it. But I'm wondering if, if it all couldn't be brought down a few notches and what your thinking was in terms of being somewhat resistant to AAC's concerns about this in your final drawings for us?
Okay, the, the existing buildings in terms of height are not any, other than the center portion, we'll deal with the rest of the building, is no higher than the, actually it's almost within, I think it's within about 12 inches of the height of the existing buildings. It may, I'd have to check exactly our height point, but we're basically the same height. The difference is that those buildings are at the moment depressed five feet in the ground. So, in bringing, if I brought the existing buildings out and if you looked at our roof profile except for the center portion of the project, we would have the same roof profile as the existing buildings do. So, that linearity that we've established is the existing linearity of the existing project and we've chosen to be slightly lower than both the theater and the bank so that those two buildings would remain more prominent in terms of their physical elements as anchors to the end of the project and the street visibility. This is a very long project, as you're all aware. I'm certain it's nearly 800 feet long. So, this is actually quite a large project. It is in the scale not dissimilar than this convention center in reality. If you look at the overall length of the, of the property and the overall length of these buildings, it's a very long, very large project. We've chosen to put an element which we've rotated intentionally in the center to provide interest for the project so it isn't at one level missed on the street. Right now, what happens is you have a long linearity. Your mind catches that linearity instantly, registers it as a concept and then forgets about it. I understand that thing that I've just passed physically in my mind and I don't have to look at it anymore. However, much as Wright and Wexler and other people have done in the past, if you introduce an asymmetrical element, your mind stops and pays attention to it. And that's what we're trying to get people to do. We think that we've kept the scale of the building below that of the office building behind it and so its highest element is lower than what you see at the back. And so, what you're really only doing is catching it as you're in high movement and high-speed movement. Excuse me. And at high-speed movement, you need something which catches your eye relatively quickly. And if we hadn't rotated it, you'd catch it, see it, your mind would comprehend it and perceive it and then again move on. Whereas when we've rotated the second building in an opposing direction, your mind can't do that because it doesn't fit. So, your mind stops and pays attention to it. And what we're trying to do is get people to pay attention to a site that people have previously ignored, that hasn't been retail-friendly or tenant-friendly, I don't even say retail-friendly, it hasn't been tenant-friendly. It's been dark, it's been below the street grade and as a consequence, it's not been very, very leasable. It's had large portions of the building that remain unleased for years and this is our effort in order to change that. We've had, as an architectural group, reasonable success in projects that we've done globally and they're usually well-received. People like them. We think of scale of people as they're moving about them and I want the spaces to create a warm, welcoming effect when people are at them. So, the materials we've chosen and the landscaping that our partners have done is a really warm and friendly one. And I think when it's completed, that's what people will find. That's generally the response that I get from people. They don't know why they find our projects calming, but they do. And we do it because we've established certain linearities, certain rhythms in a project. We do transitions at the end where they can be consistent from one material to another. We won't pop something in the middle of a facade that throws somebody off. That's kind of the logic behind where we've come from.
I totally get where you, where you're coming from in terms of wanting something to have a, have a curb appeal that will attract people as they're driving down Talkwitz. Talkwitz, however, is a very special street in Palm Springs. It needs to be handled very carefully with respect to new development. And it just seems to me that there are less ostentatious ways to highlight this property that will give it the pop that you want, but in keeping with more of a Palm Springs aesthetic, which I don't think this does at all.
If it's a curved roof and within two blocks of this project, there's a project that has a similar curve to the roof. It's in two directions and it's on a single building. So, it's, it's neighbor within two blocks on Talkwitz, fronting on Talkwitz. In terms of...
Which building is that?
I think it's the, I think it's the, it's either a small residential building or a small hotel. I'm not certain which. It's two blocks on the same side of streets as Talkwitz Canyon is.
And to the east.
And to the east, yes.
Toward the airport.
Toward town.
Yeah, but it's, it has a different feel to it. But what I, what I think, what I'd like to do is continue asking, is that still in the vein of a question?
My question, the reason, I know I gave an opinion as well, but we're at that stage, I think, too, but I, I just wanted to hear from you, the architect.
I appreciate that.
What your rationale was behind this particular aesthetic, which AAC found troubling all three times it visited it. And I think you're going to find that we're going to have a little bit of trouble with it as well. And I want to give you the benefit of the doubt for your thinking because I want you to understand that we take this project very seriously and know it is very much needed. We want to keep these theaters and we want to keep this and make this a viable center again.
Right.
But we want to do it in the context of a Palm... But we want to do it in the context of a Palm Springs aesthetic.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but, and relative to the comment about a Palm Springs aesthetic, I can show you eighty buildings in Palm Springs and every one of them is different. And I, but I understand, I think, where the flavor of committee has been coming from. And what we've tried to do is to say, look, what we wanted to do is to capture the existing flavor of, let's call it steel, steel, stone and glass buildings with primarily a focus on a flat roof, and then moving that kind of one level up. It's kind of its next, where does, you know, you, you either stay, you either advance or you stay trapped in the past. So, what we're trying to do is say, look, here's a way to start to do a bit of a transition, it isn't wildly out of character, it's, it's slightly differently, it has the same elements that are in the desert, it has a large portion of really flats, simply sloped roofs that are, you know, flat for the entire project, and yet at the same time, it has one element which starts to distinguish it. And I don't think that that's a bad way for things to progress in terms of design movement and design aesthetic. And all I can say is, you know, we've been reasonably successful in what we've done, that's all.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments.
I appreciate your comments, too.
Michael, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just going to go back to your discussion of the path of travel from the parking to the theater entrance. Can you describe the grade changes that a pedestrian would encounter between the parking lot, parking garage, and the entrance to the theater? Height-
Okay.
And, and location?
Never more than a one and twelve slope?
Just, just the height and the location?
Approximately two feet, a ramp of approximately two feet from the parking structure down to grade?
Okay, two feet down.
Okay. Approximately four feet up?
Two feet down, four feet up.
Okay, and, and this will be one foot?
One foot, which way?
Sloping from the high point here-
So, two feet down-
Towards the theater.
Two feet down, four feet up, one foot down.
Right, and you're, and then at the theater entrance right now, they go down, I think, the two feet again, approximately two feet again.
So, two feet down, four feet up, one foot down, four feet down.
Yeah, and there's, there should-
Did I get that right?
Yeah, two feet down, four feet up, kind of one foot up, one foot back down because of street grade, and then about two feet down at the theater again.
They were raising it about six feet.
I'm sorry?
Raised about six feet from where it is today?
No, it's, it's four feet, five inches to be exact, but.
If I was a skateboarder, would I like this?
Pardon?
If I was a skateboarder, would this be my dream center?
No, the, the only place it would be your dream center is the ADA ramp, but that's every ADA ramp in existence, you know, so.
I just, I'm, I'm not, I, I just couldn't resist.
No, I know, I understand it. We look at it from a design standpoint as well, and that's why we've got curves in the ramps and, you know, things that are not quite so, but we're required by ADA to have certain slopes, and we can't do about that.
So, we're, we're going through the items, and I think-
We're, we're at the distance between the buildings, we've just talked really about item six, which is the architectural character of the project, the central courtyard.
Well, let's talk about the architectural character a little more. Talk, talk materials to us, show us the boards, they want it timeless and not trendy. And that's really, I think that goes to Doug Donenfeld's question, and I, I just would say that when I looked at it, I saw trendy and not timeless.
Architectural concrete block, okay. We've, we've chosen a split face architectural block, similar to the Wexler block, different color, but same finish.
So, so show that to us.
That's, this material here?
That's concrete block.
If you pull the Wexler block-
Is that concrete board?
It's on the board.
This is concrete block?
Yeah, this is a concrete block, this is just an artificial concrete block.
Oh, okay, I thought it was-
It's just a man, it's just a man-made concrete block.
And is that on the front of the building, where it's-
This is our generalized material where we have stone shown all the way around the building.
And can you clarify the pattern, because your three-
The pattern is as is shown on the drawing.
Your three representations are all different.
Yeah, I understand, the landscape architect unfortunately took just an available photograph from their website. We had a custom block actually done for this project that was as the patterning is shown on the colored elevation that you have, and these are actually the same size, the stones are actually the correct size, that's the three inch stone, the six inch and the nine inch stone, but the-
They're continuous bands.
Yeah, they're, they're continuous bands, which unfortunately, the stone company couldn't get on their board, so they, they just represented it this way.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay.
In addition to that, we have chosen a warm cherry wood finish for the walls and screening materials around the air conditioning units, so that you don't see just a metal finish, you have a nice warm cherry colored finish. We've used that same finish on the walls of the courtyard, and then the landscape architects have used a nice grouping of trees and vegetation below that in order to soften that overall area, but we've done it to warm up the entire complex in an area where it, where it's suitable, and we then utilized basically one color of material all the way around.
And are any of these changes from the last time, the things that you're talking about?
Yes, we've added, the, we've removed some screening element colors and just went, everything is now cherry, it's a single color all the way around. We've added the landscaping that was in that courtyard area, that was added since the discussions with the committee asking for additional landscaping in that area. So, we've softened that entire wall with the additional landscape, both tall elements and short elements. We've done the same in front of the building with the additional, the additional half dozen date palms, and we've added around each of the outdoor seating areas, we've added shrubbery and greenery to screen those areas, make them both more private, and at the same time, to soften the lower levels of the building for pedestrians.
And then we're going to, I think we've, have we talked about the central courtyard needs to be softened?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was, really kind of been the same comment at the same time. And then the, we've simplified the materials on the buildings, we've gone simply to match the stucco in general on the, both the theater and the, on the bank building, we've selected the same stucco finish, it will be utilized throughout the project.
And what is that finish, is that here in one of your boards?
It's a, it's a, it's shown, it's on a board here somewhere.
I have it in my pictures.
It's just a stipple finished stucco, it's, it's just a stipple finished stucco.
And there was a red, red, where are you using that? That's the one thing that, that looks-
Yeah, this is the existing Wexler block, and the material underneath is this ecotone, and it's just underneath the windows where people may kick it, beat it, abuse it, and so it's not, when they're sitting at a table, they're not rubbing up against hard stone. And it's only under the areas underneath the windows.
I think at this point, thank you, and, oh, do you have questions?
I thought he had a question, I was.
Yeah, at this point, questions for the applicant, and then we'll move to comments.
Looking at, looking at the latest drawings, and thinking of what Commissioner Donenfeld said, I think it's the roof element that everyone has-
Yeah, I understand what it is. I've, I've known well along what the issue was, and, and it's the one element which is nonlinear and different, and I understand that, and, you know, as architects, we run into this all the time, and I just got to stand my ground sometimes and, you know, work it out with people who are in the community. And if you decide in the end, my client will work with you on it, I'm sure, that's why he had no issue with dealing with staff committee.
It's going to be considered the really brilliant contrast to what we have, or, ugh.
Well, the reality is you won't see much of it, and that's the part that I can't communicate as well, but if you look at the buildings and, what you'll see is a bit of curved roof, that's what you're going to see, not going to see much of it because it's sloping away from you, and it's, it's set back from the street and, and falls away from you, so you don't really see much of it anyway. That's the whole thing about it. It's not like it stares you in the face and it's down at ten feet in height and you've got to walk into that roof. It's way, it's, it's as high as the ceiling is, okay? And if this was a curved roof going that way, think of it, you're not going to see much of it, you're going to see the underhang of it. And that's what people will see, they'll see a graceful underhang that arches away from them.
Even if they're across the street and the-
By the time you get across the street, you're, you're still not that close to the building, even on the other side of the street. We've got renderings that are shown, and, and this one is actually taken from pretty much across the street, on about, at the entrance to the street, we're kind of standing in the middle of the street when we take it. So, we're standing the equivalent of here in the intersection, and shooting back this way to take a look at that. So, you don't, it, no matter where you get on the, and that's the most visible one because you're coming straight at it. When you're coming at it from the other way, you're seeing the edge of it, so you really never see it at all.
There'll be a lot of discussion. To me, I'm, I'm really concerned about the theater, just, have they really recognized that, that the access, it's like it's going to be about, you know, fifty percent longer walk from the parking lot to the theater.
Yeah, it's going to be probably from, from this point here, going this way, which would bring you to here, you've got that distance to walk. But what they understand is that people will be there longer, they'll have more people they believe hanging around, and that therefore encourages them to see the next movie or look at another movie that they wouldn't have thought about, and they don't see it as a really big deal. Whether you walk for one or two minutes extra to get into the theater, they don't really see it as a big deal, you're going to be there for the evening.
The theater recognizes that it's going to be the way-
Oh, yeah, we had a whole discussion with them on, on their access.
You're proposing to close that.
Yeah, yeah, and they're, they're fine, they don't, they don't really want people walking by garbage and trash coming to their, their front door.
But they don't have that today.
It's, it's not the, you know, it's not the most desirable route.
That's, that's, I don't think there is garden or trash and meters there today.
No, there isn't, there, there is theoretically not, but, you know, there, that's because the building hasn't been occupied. If it was, there would have been existing garbage bins on that side.
How will the delivery trucks get to these restaurants and whatever other space?
And I want to answer, I think it was your question also earlier, or maybe it was Madam Chair's, from this parking lot, there is an access, you can go right along that sidewalk and right out to the main, main sidewalk and, and onto the property.
And can you still go down to the courtyard?
Yeah, you can, you have to go back through the middle to go down to the courtyard, but you have to do that now. You have to come all the way up to the side, all the way up to here and go down an ADA ramp.
Nine, well, today, you can certainly go down steps to get-
Well, you can still go down the steps, no, I'm saying if you're ADA.
Okay.
Steps, yeah, you can still walk out of here and walk right down the steps, we're not changing those steps at all.
There's an existing ramp, isn't there?
There's an existing ramp, that's what I said, that comes from the street over here. We're taking, at the moment, the plan is to take that out, replace it with additional landscaping, because it really isn't a necessary access point, we want everybody to really use the main focal point of the, of the courtyard to come down into the property.
But if you're walking in that parking structure, you've got to walk down the steps there, right?
In here, yes, you have, no, you, you, you can get, again, you can go along the upper level walkway. Behind the bank, there is a walkway, this is a little-
And that walkway will stay so that you'll be able to walk?
Correct. You can walk down, your choices are as follows, if I'm in this, if I'm in the parking lot, I can walk straight ahead down a set of stairs, I can walk to the left and go out to the street and then come back into the property if I'm an ADA person. Also, from the parking structure at the upper level, that was another question, there is an elevator that takes people from the upper level down, so you can use an elevator to come down to the lower level without having to go down any stairs.
At this entrance, from the parking structure to the, there's both steps and a ramp, so you're not forced to go down steps. This is a ramp on this side, these are steps on this side. And then the other benefit to the theater was we enlarged this actual courtyard. This is used for film festival events, I'm sure you've all been there. So, one of the things we, we hadn't pointed out is that we enlarged the area or plaza outside, so now we have another area venue outside the theater itself, and then also the central plaza, the thinking here was that we can have a group of people sitting in this area, and because this is raised up, we could have a speaker there, a presentation, awards, so it's, it's a multi-functional type space.
Commissioner Middleton, did you have questions?
I, I do, although most of my questions are somewhat more financial than they are architectural.
Need be, I'll get the owner to talk.
I'll start with, and try to get into that vein with this question. As I look at the project and what you have planned and what I saw when I walked that project, either going to a movie or, as I did today, just go over and walk around, it's, I'm going to reinforce what Commissioner Donenfeld said, I want to see this project succeed.
Thank you.
I think it's an extremely important location for the city, and I'm thrilled that someone wants to put a significant investment in it. Most of the struggle has been around the two buildings that are going to be demolished, or the building that will be demolished and then the two that will replace it. Can you help me as to why you believe those two buildings that you're going to construct are necessary? If this was one large courtyard, you simply demolished the, the building, I think you have a much more attractive looking location.
The project economics, I'll let the owner really discuss that as he wishes, but the project economics, states can't drop twenty thousand square feet out of pretty much anybody's pro forma, and I will include his, and make a, it represents fifteen percent of the projects, you'd be eliminating fifteen percent of the revenue for the project, which means that you've got to get it back from somewhere. And also, you've now taken away the highest value revenue space, which is the street frontage. The, the problem is that this project was poorly designed as an architect in the first place, and it's been suffering from it since its inception, and you've got to get rid of the problem and start over with it, is what we're trying to do here.
And you need twenty thousand square feet there, and you've got market studies that tell you that you're going to be able to put that twenty thousand square feet to use?
Yes. He's got, he has tenant interest for a good portion of the space at this point in time. If we ever get it, we can get it going.
How much vacant space is in that building right now?
Twenty thousand square feet, and that particular part of the building and another seven thousand square feet of the rest of the building, I think.
And in the total complex, how much vacant space is there right now?
Commissioners, a good afternoon, Sam Rasmussen, President of Ocean Properties Development, San Diego, owner of the project. The, what we did was I bought this project in two thousand and three, it had gone through a couple bankruptcies, if all of our commissioners remember, at one point, the FDIC took over this project. I bought the project and the, it, it was a, a little hopscotch of a variety of tenants and, and whatnot, and we've turned it around, we put about three million dollars into the rear three-story office building, remodeled all the bathrooms, and our rear three-story office building's ninety-two percent occupied. As part of our remodel expectation, because we're committing a lot of money to revamp the entire center of the courtyard, I deliberately vacated the, the ground floor of the rear three-story building. It was eighty-five percent occupied. I currently have seven letters of interest for a variety of tenants to the rear that are mostly service, real estate, escrow, title, things of that nature that don't need the retail frontage and the walk and, and whatnot. So, we're positioned to fill up that ground floor in the rear three-story building. The, the front building is chopped up into tiny suites currently, it's five feet below grade, and it's, I can lease that space for about seventy-five cents a foot to an entry-level tenant, and, and you get somebody to come on in and come on out, but what we're, our, our desire was to make this a statement project for the community, really do something where it's, it compares with your downtown project. This is seven acres, it's a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, and we want a use that's compatible for the community in the long term. As you all know, you come into this parking lot right now, and I can see everyone's memory ingrained, well, I just go right into the movie theater, I go into the movie theater, I come back out and I leave. There's no other tenants, we've designed a project now that'll mix with the community, and you go in the middle and you see a yogurt on one side and you see a coffee on the other side, and you get to the front, I already have four or five letters of interest for restaurants that love our design, think it's creative, don't think it's boxy, so on and so forth, and we want to unify the project, we want Regal Cinema to be part of an entertainment project like other projects in Southern California, and not an island sitting by itself next to empty buildings. And the, the building we have to build has to have energy, it has to have glazing because it's designed for retail and restaurants and, and whatnot, and, and not just little cookie cutter offices.
So, is it an entertainment complex that is your theme?
The theme is a twenty-year theme. When I design projects, I think of the twenty-year plan, and so what we did on the front new buildings is I broke each one of those buildings up into five individual suites. into five individual suites. I had the same concerns that one of the commissioners raised, is who's going to move into the back courtyard area? And that's why I designed those rear suites to just be 1,200 square feet. And that worked, as it is right now, very well, because I have a yogurt, and I have a little coffee, and I have a small sushi, that will move into that center courtyard. And then we are submitting a unified signage plan to the city as early as next week, where we're asking for a little bit of signage, just like Gardens on El Paso, where some of the back tenants have a little eyebrow signage or whatnot, so that our rear tenants can get a little bit of visibility and signage on the front of the project.
All right. Do you have a sense of, with the, what was it, 150,000 square feet, how much of that would be retail, movie, office, restaurant? How would that break down?
The bank building, currently with Pacific Western Bank, is 20,000 square feet, and it is on a long-term ground lease. So they control that building and the tenants and whatnot. The movie theater is 40,000 square feet, just slightly under that. And then our office component to the rear is about 70,000 to 80,000 square feet. So the retail and the energy, and when I talk about retail and restaurants, they're interchangeable. I do have a high-end residential real estate company where they like that frontage on either Palm Canyon or Tocqueville, where they can show their listings in a nice format. So it's designed to be a combination of a good high-end retail and restaurants, and as they come and go over a 20-year period, you know, make it compatible with the community.
How much retail?
Are there more questions? Commissioner Lowell?
Several questions. Do you have a representation of, the building as it stands alone appears to be massive, but I think we'd get a much better perspective of it if we had a presentation that showed it as integrated in with the theater and the bank building, so that you could see the height relative to those buildings.
We have done that, and we submitted full elevations. Our building that we're putting in in the front has a blended height of about 22 feet. The bank building is 30, the theater building is 30, and the rear three-story office building is 42 or 45 feet. So this tucks in the middle.
If you would like to see that, if you give me two minutes, I'll go to my car. I've got my computer out there, and I'm happy to. I have an elevation that's completely done from street level dead straight on. I have provided the committee before, or to staff before, but they may chose not to include it.
Why don't we take a five-minute break, and you bring that in?
I think that would be extremely helpful.
And we'll take a 10-minute break. We will reconvene. Yeah, maybe we should. We'll reconvene at 3 o'clock.
Please take your seats. The meeting of the Planning Commission has been resumed. I have a message to the commissioners from the mayor who's watching on television, and he has told us that we are not speaking into the microphones, and please speak up.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, please accommodate our public.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have brought up the rendering elevation from the street as a direct facade. It's both on the side view here and on the front here. As you can see, this is the main canopy line of the theater. This is our main building line underneath that canopy that runs continuously all the way along. And as you can see, our roofs align with the roof line of the office building behind. This is the courtyard area here, so you can see the office building all the way behind along with the trees and landscaping that are in there. You obviously can't see the canopies, which are these little black specks in there because they're seeing them on edge, so they're only aligned thick. And I think what this shows, at least from our perspective, is that although we -- everybody is worried about the dynamics of the project, as an entertainment complex, it needs to be a little bit dynamic. And yet, at the same time, we've tried to respect the overall linearity of the project. We've allowed these two key elements to be more prominent than our structure, our new one, and so we've lowered it below those. That's what your street facade looks like. I'm happy to answer questions about it. And we have about 40 or 50 additional views of the property that I've loaded onto the planning director's computer that you can -- you're welcome to have a scroll through if you would like. And I can do a three-dimensional walkthrough over here from anybody who wants to see a movie.
We see a number -- a few of them, Flynn, and if -- we have three commissioners there, so if we can keep two, not a majority of the commission in front of each of the screens.
Now, some of these views will be from older iterations. You can see the dropped Wayne Scott, for example, that we dropped at the request of the Architectural Committee. But you can see at various stages a whole variety of views of the project. This is one in the direct courtyard looking to the south from the street entry.
Is that still the artwork you're looking at? The sculpture? Is that still the sculpture you're looking at?
Sculpture is going to go through the owner, and he's going to commission it and bring it through as a separate presentation to Architectural Committee as well as Planning Commission.
It's like you're trying to, at least in that drawing, trying to reflect the -- again, the rolled roof reflected in the sculpture. Is that the concept?
Yeah, it's -- the intention is to have an interesting sculpture, and I don't -- I think he's going to work that out with staff and with the commission. But here's -- you can see in this view, we've added a large amount of landscaping. This was the earlier concept in this area here, along, and we've added taller landscaping to the views so that...
Please clarify that you're saying more?
We've added -- if you -- you have the drawing actually in front of you from the landscape architect in your presentation that shows a view from here with his added landscaping. If I could borrow that one from you for a second, maybe?
That's the one we got today.
Right here. So, on this -- and I'll hold it up to everybody else so they can see it for a moment. On this rendering here, you'll notice that there are a number of additional trees that have been added that add linearity to the elements as well as additional ground cover in the planters adjacent to where we've done the warm cherry wood wall. And then, if you hold that for a second, you can see -- you don't really see much of the roof. It's just a curved element that kind of disappears from you. This is all the way across the street, basically. View into the courtyard, you can see the overhead canopies that we've added, canvases that we've added for both color and interest and to provide shade as you walk through that central courtyard area. Again, this is walking up. Again, you don't -- even in the project, you can't really see the fact that there's a curved roof. Curved roof is way back up in here.
If you don't see it, why are we doing it?
I'm sorry?
If you don't see it, what's -- why are we doing it?
Yeah, well, you see it in passing, but you don't -- it's not like it overpowers you. That's my main point. I think there's been more concern about the roof being an overpowering statement when in react -- actually, it's just an element of interest that really is just there to catch your eye. You know, somebody in an airplane will notice it more, obviously, you know, because you're up above the project, but from there, I don't mind it. Dual entries or single entries depend upon whether the owner got a combined contract? No. Well, it's only -- this is only 18 feet, which is a standard sort of restaurant height. Yeah, and we've got -- so, in the center one, just for interest, we've got somewhere between two feet and 12 feet. It's really, you know, it's -- because it's a canted roof, it's low on one corner and it goes up 12 feet on the other corner. So, yes, technically, we're at the maximum height, but it's only for a period of, you know, 12 inches across the roof, and then it goes starting to fall from that point again in all directions. No, and relative to the question of sculpture, it's been Marilyn Monroe, it's been a sculpture, it's been a fountain, it's been everything in there. It's just a placeholder.
Are you -- okay. Can I ask a question?
Pardon? Hopefully, this helps you understand the project a little better, at least.
Yeah. I'm still concerned about the remoteness of the parking in terms of the success of the project.
Well, we can't change the parking. The parking is the parking. It's a big structure. There's actually a lot of convenient -- relatively large amount of convenient parking. You know, the only thing you could do on the second floor is you could cover more of it, but most people are using the ground floor because it's shaded and it's a shorter walk. So, you have to follow human nature, which is to park as close to a doorway as you can and walk from there. And if you do that, you walk, in the first instance, down a ramp of your choice or walk down a more gradual set of stairs than are there today. We've enhanced the entrance from the garage so that it is a more statement -- more of a statement entrance with a bit of a ground sign and plantings and, you know, we've upgraded the floor.
If you're in the garage today, you hardly know where the -- unless you're already familiar with it.
Oh, yeah, you can't tell. You come into there, but that's part of what we've done. We've changed the signage out at the street as well. You'll see that in a separate package and submission in the next few days.
Will there be signing on this -- on Tocqueens indicating where parking is?
Signage?
Will there be any signage on Tocqueens indicating where people can park?
Yeah, yeah. There will be signage at the street sides that say there's parking there. We've discussed with the owner, and I haven't seen the final signage package, so I can't really comment, but the discussion has been that there would be some directory signage on the property, which would obviously include directory to where parking is. And the ground sign on the corner is a very low-stated ground sign that simply states that this is called the scene and, you know, parking in that direction and parking in that direction depending on which way you're coming from.
At this point, shall I close the question, period? Do we have any more questions?
Yes, I'm not finished yet.
I have one question real quick.
Hold on. Commissioner Lowe had the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Going back to the original slide, which you have up now, it almost appears from this point to be basically a flat roof with two higher ends at the end. You don't really -- the curves don't stand out nearly as much as they do when you have the individual pictures of each of the buildings, which gives me less concern. I was concerned about how bold it actually was, but it really is not when you take a look at it.
Right, and I've tried to explain it, and it's hard to communicate that sometimes, and it really -- it's...
It's really important to have the perspective...
I'm not asking for comments at this point.
Yes, I understand.
Only questions, please.
I'm getting to a question there. Have you considered, in terms of the parking garage as a part of this complex, have you considered doing shade structures or solar shade panels on the second floor? There's going to be a dramatic increase in the amount of people parking in that garage today, and probably when there's a Goodwill playing anyway, at least half or three-quarters of the parking garage downstairs is full. So, with restaurants, et cetera, I would think the second floor will get much more use.
It may. At this stage, the owner has not directed us to do anything relative to the second floor. He's a pretty responsive owner and forward-thinking, so he generally acts in his own best interests so that if that's an opportunity, I'm sure he would, you know, react to it accordingly. This project, obviously, is demonstration of that because he's, you know, doing it forward without having to have somebody tell him that he needs to be done.
I think that'd be a significant improvement. Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, just real quickly, on the site plan again, you indicated that you're not going to have people walking on the east side of the new building...
Correct.
...to get to the theater because of certain service elements, and yet, you're having people walk on the west side of the new building.
No, they actually don't walk on the west side either. They walk at an elevated level above the west side building on the bank's property, if you will. On our property, we've closed off that access from that side as well. It has a service ramp that goes down to a service area so that things can be removed from a service standpoint, but it's...
So, how far -- how close will you be to the service items when you're walking on that elevated area?
When you're on the elevated walkway, you're about 12 to 15 feet away.
Okay. And then, I think one of the other commissioners asked, and I think we got sidetracked, but it was a good question. How do you service these buildings? Is there a loading dock?
The buildings are serviced through the existing service docks, so that the office building, service area is in here, so this building basically brings its goods down here and into this building and then gets serviced out at the back of this building.
So, the truck parks where your hands just were?
And a truck park -- a truck -- well, the trucks can -- for the theater presently park on the street, trucks will service from this parking lot here as well.
For the restaurants?
Yeah, and they will then come through the back courtyard...
Okay.
...and either go in this area, which is the intended service area. So, we've closed this off in here, again, on this side of the building, just as we've allowed the theater to have an expanded area, both for the film theater and for activities that are adjacent to the theater.
Right.
And then, we've closed it off behind the service area back.
Right. I'm sorry, just one more question. What are the size of the units, square footage of the restaurant units?
Okay. This is about a 1,200 square foot unit. This is about a 1,200 square foot unit. This is around 2,500 square feet. This is around 1,800 square feet. This is around 2,700 square feet.
Thank you.
I have one more question for the applicant.
Please.
And this may be, again, for the financial person. One of the questions I asked earlier of the director was whether or not the extensions of time changes that we made would apply to this project, and I just want to make sure you understand that under the changes that Palm Springs has now enacted, you have two years to begin construction and no more than two more years after that that can be extended. Are you confident that you have the financial -- financing plans in place to make this work?
Yes, those timeframes are more than sufficient.
Okay. We...
Can I ask one more question?
No.
Good.
No, I think at this point, we're going to go to comments. We do have one more applicant sitting here. So, I'd like to start with comments, and I'm going to start this way around, so you're the first commenter. And then, I'm not going to take a motion yet until everybody has commented.
I would like to see us maybe go out and do a site visit because some of this is hard to visualize. It'd be a fairly early morning site visit, these towns over here, but I really would like to go out there and visualize and have the architect explain to us exactly what's envisioned at each particular location. I think we've learned a lot from the site visits we've done in two of the major recent projects, and I'd certainly like to consider that for this one.
On that issue, are there -- is there any -- is there agreement here, or do people feel like they can?
I could reach a decision without the site visit. I mean, I would participate if the group decided we were going to do that, but I don't -- I don't really need that as part of my evaluation.
Yeah, I don't need it either. Thank you.
I don't either. We spend a lot of time at their property over the years.
Yeah. I'm quite familiar with it, too.
Commissioner Middleton?
I could go either way. I -- as far as the site visit, so I'm comfortable with an awful lot of what I've heard and seen today.
I don't think I need that either, so why don't we continue? And just general comments. Commissioner Callahan? No? Commissioner Lowe, comments?
No, I'm done.
Commissioner Middleton?
I arrived this morning looking at this project and looking at the plans that I've seen, and I had some real concerns as to the viability of the project, and I'm not an architect, but I don't think I have seen a set of plans in the three years that I've been on this commission where, looking down, it looks one way, and then looking at the picture that we're looking at right now, it looks dramatically different. This is a much more impressive-looking project, looking at it in this view. So, I'm impressed with much of what I have heard from the applicant this afternoon. And I will take this opportunity to say I would very much like the applicant to take a serious look at solar on the roof of the parking lot. I think it's an absolutely outstanding location for that, and that is an emerging part of the Palm Springs projects.
Commissioner Donfeld?
I sort of gave my opinion at the beginning of the meeting. I didn't intend it to be an opinion, but it turned out to be more of an opinion than a question. And I have to say, I agree with Ms. Middleton in the fact that, having seen this -- seen the development from this perspective, I'm not as concerned about the overwhelming visuals of the two roof lines as I were -- as I was before, and I understand that the developer and the applicant definitely want something that is -- has great eye appeal and will draw people to the site. I still think, though, it's very important, since this is such a critical location in our city, it's the gateway to Palm Springs, basically. There still may be some tweaks that will make those roof lines a little bit more subtle and a little bit less prominent, and I don't know what the motion's likely to be, but I could support a motion that would send this to a subcommittee of the Planning Commission for purposes of sitting down with the developer and the owner to see whether there aren't any further tweaks that we might do to make it a little bit less visually impactful than it is right now and still can -- and still have the sense of interest and excitement that the owner's looking for. But I'm not nearly as concerned about the roof lines as I was before, and I think overall it's going to be an excellent addition to Palm Springs.
Commissioner Hirschhorn?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for this project. It's, as has been stated, it's just way overdue, and we're happy that something's going to be done here, whatever the -- we're very happy something's going to be done here. I, too, understand the developer's desire to make a visual statement. It's not on Palm Canyon, it's on Tocqueens, which although is a very important artery between downtown and the airport, is not on -- is not Palm Canyon, it's not our primary shopping street or restaurant street. So, I understand the need to do something impactful as far as the design goes. I also think that the main gesture that this project does is raise up the restaurant level to the street, which is really the most important thing, the most troubling thing about the existing building, and it's the most important thing that you could do to make this successful. I do agree with Commissioner Donfeld that I don't think the project is where we want it right now architecturally. I think architecturally, there does need to be some changes, and to that end, I would support staff's recommendation to send it to a subcommittee for review and then back to Planning Commission for final review. I'd like to propose that that -- I don't know if this should be part of a motion, but I'd like...
Can you hold a motion, and I'll come back to you after?
Well, it's a comment, really.
Okay.
Well, maybe it's not a comment, maybe it is a motion.
Hold the motion...
Okay, okay.
...and I'll come back to you for a motion. Just I wanted a chance to comment as well before a motion got made. I like the site plan. I think the work that you've been doing on the site plan is important. I do think that the items, many of the items that came to us from AAC still stand. The street trees are important. This is Section 14. We can't substitute just small palms and not have street trees. It's something that we agreed with the tribes that we would do. I think we really need to look at what the streetscape looks like in terms -- I think there've been some miscues here in terms of finding possibly the best elements of the Wexler Building that can be brought into this. Although you brought the Wexler brick, you put it in a horizontal position instead of a vertical position, which I think the bank building uses, the theater uses, and I think there's some ways that it could tie better in. I still think that the -- although, when I look at it this way, it looks good, I think that there needs to be more work done on the roof lines. I think they're still trendy, and I'm not comfortable with what I'm seeing, but I do like the site plan, and I would like to see this go forward. So, from my point of view, it's still too important, it's not there yet. You've got the Capter buildings across the street, you have the Wexler buildings around it. I think it needs to work better with those two components without copying them, but still work with them. So, those are my comments on it. It's street trees, there's still -- I really want to see the shade elements shown. As I went through the property, the nicest part of the walk up was that it was mainly shade as you walked up between the buildings. I don't see quite enough of that now. So, those are the things that I'm concerned about, not -- I guess it's design as opposed to concept and use. So, Michael, I'm going to go to you for a motion.
Well, to support the staff recommendation to refer to subcommittee, and I'd like the subcommittee instructions to the applicant that the first meeting be an information meeting, that we just sit down with the applicant, the subcommittee sits down with the applicant, understands, maybe we get some of these better renderings printed out... understands, maybe we get some of these better renderings printed out, because as we learned just recently, that some of the renderings portray the building differently than other renderings. The colors on some of the renderings are different than the material boards. We, we need, we need a set of drawings that accurately portrays what the developer is presenting, and, and favorably presents it as well. And then, let the subcommittee react with specific recommendations, and then have a second follow-up meeting where the, the changes are presented to us.
In your motion, staff's motion was to approve with conditions, and your motion is to send a subcommittee in return. Am I correct?
Well, I thought the staff was-
It did not have the recommendation for the subcommittee in the conditions that we have, so-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it did.
No, it does not. So, your motion includes the subcommittee as you've just outlined.
And to return to the commission?
Yes.
So, not approve, but, but send a subcommittee?
Yes, structured such that we have an information meeting with the applicant, and then a follow-up response to that.
And the items you want to deal with in the subcommittee? Are they the seven, the seven, eight items in the-
I, I would like to leave it a little more open-ended, and let the subcommittee come back at that meeting with the items it wants the applicant to address. Is that, is that acceptable?
We do have, we did have items from the AAC, so do you not want to include those items?
Yes, I'd like to include those, but there might be additional ones that come up in, in that information meeting as well.
Uh, subcommittee members? I know that Commissioner Donenfeld had offered to be on that subcommittee-
Yes, I'd like-
Commissioner Hirschbein, and, and-
Doug, or the other Doug? They would volunteer as well.
I'm just wondering if, if Hudson, Doug Hudson would be a good person on that subcommittee?
Oh, yeah, I, I, yeah, definitely Doug Hudson.
Uh, do we know if he's due back?
Yes, he is due back before our joint Planning Commission meeting on the 20th.
Fine.
But that would be the first day you could have a subcommittee meeting?
Correct.
And if he's not available, we'll appoint a third person?
Okay.
With a backup of, um-
I, can I just say something to, to the applicant, just generally? Is that appropriate at this point?
I think people can comment on the motion.
Well-
And I'll second your motion.
I, I just want to point out that, uh, I think everybody agrees, everybody that's been on AAC and planning, that this is an important project, we want to see it built, but there's a certain bar in terms of design that this project needs to pass, and, and it's going to be difficult for it to get approved until such time as that's, it's judged that that's, that that's happened. So, I'd just like the applicant to understand, understand that.
Are there other comments on the motion? Can we call the motion? Donenfeld?
Yes.
Hirschbein?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Keldredin?
Yes.
Chair Worming?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero with one absent. Show, does anybody need a break, or should we move to 3B? 3B? Staff report, please.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, the next item on your agenda is an appeal of the denial of a sign permit for a business at 1247 South Gene Autry Trail. The applicant submitted a sign permit request to us. I reviewed that sign permit request relative to the approved sign program for the business complex. The applicant was requesting two signs of approximately 28.5 square feet in area each, one on the east elevation of the building facing Gene Autry, and then one on the south elevation of the building. The approved sign program would only allow signs of five square feet in area, and so consequently, based on that, I denied the permit because it exceeded the size, and then the second sign on the south elevation of the building would not be permitted, either under the sign program or under the city's sign regulations. The applicant has appealed that decision to you today, and so that is what we are asking you to look at, is the denial of that sign application. There's some background information that I think is critical for you all to understand in terms of the property and the proposed signage. The property in question is part of an 11-lot business complex. What is unique about this complex, typically we would see a business complex where it's under one ownership. In this case, it exists as 11 separate lots, and so they are under separate ownership. The sign program for the complex was approved back in 1991. I've included what is in our file, the sign program, and as you'll see, it's a single blueprint sheet that has a notation from the Assistant Planning Director at that point in time, indicating that the blueprint drawing is the sign program, and that it has been approved by staff. Again, this was done back in 1991. The sign program itself identifies that signs may be five square feet in area. On the document, it shows a sign of one foot in height and five feet in width. It also identifies that it's to be a plexiglass, a bronze plexiglass with white Helvetica lettering, and that is the detail that we have on the sign program for the complex. To further confuse matters, I've given you a history of the approved signs that we have record of having permits at the property since 1991, which is included in your backup materials. What you will see from that is that there are no signs that meet those dimensions. There are three signs that were eight square feet in area, but again, they exceed the five square feet that is shown on the document. That is the sign program. And then, in one case, there was one sign back in, let's see, 2005, which actually went to the Architectural Advisory Committee for approval. I can't see that the other signs did. That sign was 92 square feet in area, which significantly exceeds what the sign program would allow, and for some reason, the AAC approved that.
Which building was that?
Uh, that is on the 1227 South Gene Autry Trail, so it's the building that's immediately north of the subject building, and it does face Gene Autry.
It's the, um, medical equipment building?
Correct. Correct. So in terms of the history, again, what is confusing to me is I have a document that is the sign program, and then in the signs that have been approved for the, the project, the complex, none of them meet those dimensions. I do need to indicate that the sign that was approved by staff in 2015 for this business prior, staff made an error in permitting the sign. That's the one that was issued, the sign permit that was issued on August 31st of 2015, and that was 38.5 square feet in area. And again, staff made the error in issuing that, and we should not have.
And that's the building on Gene Autry to the west?
That's the subject building of 1247. And so, what would happen is, the signage that the applicant is proposing would replace the existing signage. The intent is that it would replace the non-conforming aspects of that signage. One of the other things, let's see, that I was going to point out to you, is we did go to the site, look at the existing signage on the site. There are two signs, I believe, that do meet the dimensional requirements, but neither of those have permits. And there are very few signs within the complex currently that have evidence of having permits. My assumption is that because many of the signs are not illuminated, the sign companies did not go to the building and safety department to get an electrical permit, which would be the typical process. That's my assumption as to why they do not have permits. So again, those are kind of the background issues that need to be taken into consideration with this. I've laid out for you two possible courses of action. Number one is to deny the appeal, finding that the proposed signage does not meet the approved sign program for the property. What we would then need to do is then do code enforcement, follow up with that on the signs that do not have permits, and the signs that exceed the area that's permitted. The exception would be those signs which do have permits and have been approved, that because they have gone through that process and do have an approval, those would be able to remain in place. The second course of action for you is to approve the appeal, finding that the proposed signage is in conformance with the city's sign code. As I indicate in the staff report, at 28.5 square feet in area, the sign does meet the city's requirements relative to square footage, and so if this were to be permitted under the sign code, it would be permissible. I do have a caveat to that, the second sign that the applicant is requesting would not be permissible. They would only be able to have one sign on the elevation facing Gene Autry. We would also recommend that if that is your course of action, that we contact the owners within the complex and request that the sign program for the complex be updated. Ultimately, the goal of the city is where there are multi-unit complexes, that there be a cohesive sign program for the complex. And what we would want to see is something that brings the signage for the complex together as part of a cohesive package. So with that, that concludes my comments. You have both the applicant here and the owner of the building here, if you have any questions, and then staff is available to answer questions as well.
Questions, uh, ten questions of staff? Lynn, do you want to start and we'll go along?
Um, we got a letter and a report from, like, Steve Letterman, and there are a couple things in there that he alleges, I guess, as one of the other owners in the property, that we have different codes for medical marijuana facilities?
There is language in Chapter Five of the city's municipal code relative to operational procedures for medical cannabis businesses. The language that he's citing is relative to signage. While it doesn't limit the size of the signage, it does say that signage is limited to the name of the business and cannot include products or services.
What, does that mean a logo or something like that?
It means that only the name of the business, so logo or symbols would not be permitted.
But it doesn't talk about the size of the signage?
No, it does not.
And then, is there any relevance to the discussion, because these are essentially condos, separately owned lots, that that changes the requirements of the, uh, sign, of the city's sign ordinance?
Here is the unusual thing. In the city's sign code, relative to a sign program, it uses the language, "A multi-tenant building shall have a sign program." The intent, again, is that where you have multiple tenants in a project, that the signage more or less matches, that it's consistent throughout the project. This is slightly different in that you have buildings on separate parcels. It has been the practice of the city council to require even those types of projects to have a sign program, but again, the language in the code says multi-tenant building, and in this particular instance, the subject property is a single-tenant building.
So, that would, if that were the case, would that suggest that the city's sign ordinance would apply rather than a sign program?
Potentially, but then again, you've got-
But then there already is an existing sign program.
There's an approved sign program which references, the address is 1227 to 1247.
And the, um, house, if we have an existing sign program, we would normally follow that, correct?
That is correct.
And then, if they thought that didn't work for the building, the buildings, they would come in and change it?
Yes, they would have the ability to come in and amend their sign program.
Flynn, in-
Commissioner Donenfeld?
Along with that same line of questioning, the, in the owner's letter, the representative of all the owners, the letter we received, he is suggesting that they would be willing to come up, if we gave them a four-month grace period, they would come up with a sign program, and I assume they, it would be one that would be in compliance with our sign code. That's, that's their offering that up as an alternative as well.
Mm-hmm.
How, how would the planning department feel about that?
We would support that. Again, because there isn't approved sign program, where almost none of the signs comply with that, we would certainly want to see a sign program that could bring all of the signage for the complex into compliance with a program.
Thank you.
Flynn, go ahead. Flynn, um, as I follow this, it's, appears that we've got a owner and a tenant who have a dispute over what proper signage should be. I'm not aware of the city getting in the middle of that kind of argument. Is there precedent for this?
In terms of the city getting in the dispute, no. What we have before you today is a request for a sign permit that was denied. The Planning Commission has asked to review that sign permit application relative to the adopted sign program and the city's sign code, and that is what you are being asked to do today.
So, if the, if we should vote that, that the applicant has to comply with the sign program, then the city would then require the rest of the buildings to comply as well?
Correct. We would need to notify code enforcement of the other violations that exist, since those have been identified.
Flynn, if we notified code enforcement, if we gave them a four-month grace period, we would not take action on the denial today, but schedule it for four months, or would we take action on the denial today and also schedule this four months out? What's your recommendation on that?
Because we cannot require the owners to come back with a sign program, it's difficult for us to say, "In four months, you shall come back with a sign program."
Right.
There is the possibility, because again, there are, you know, 11 properties, to get all of them to agree, so there's nothing that we can do to require them to come in by a certain date to do that. So that's the one difficulty. However, I think your idea of if a sign program comes back, giving leniency until the sign program comes back, and giving them a period to comply, would be something that would be fair and equitable.
So, if we, this is just exploring this a little more, if we deny this today, but say that we would defer in terms of asking code enforcement to come in for four months, giving them that grace, to come in with a code, with a sign program, would that work? What, what's your recommendation as to how to handle this?
I don't know if you have any thoughts. There's an issue here with an applicant who has submitted a permit that needs a decision, if you will. One of the other thoughts that I had was to defer action on the appeal for a period, and if a sign program does not come in from the property owners, then we go ahead and take action on that appeal, but I would want to hear from the applicant on that in terms of the timeframe.
Can we hear from the applicant on the timeframe?
Well, maybe the applicant can answer this, but is, like a, it's a condominium, I, sort of thing. Is there an equivalent of an HOA?
I don't know that there's an HOA. There are CCNRs for the property, because they do share a driveway and parking, which does require them to work in concert, if you will.
Well, I don't, maybe there's a, a message we could send to the HOA, which is basically all the owners of those units, that no signs, we're only going to approve per the original, uh, sign, uh, program unless they submit something, you know, more current that we could look at and approve. That way, it's not putting a burden on this particular applicant.
Can we call the applicant up?
I think if we have the applicant, we need to have those of the other owners here, to find potential owners.
If you can just talk about the time period?
Yeah, so the, the time period's a little bit prohibitive, and then also coming in and requesting for, say, US Mobility to take down their sign that's approximately 90 square feet. To put this in financial perspective, my sign is running around $6,000 for 28 square feet, so you're asking somebody to take a $15,000 sign down to conform with a dated 26-year-old document. As far as the timeframe for my facility, one of the biggest challenges for me right now is competitiveness in the marketplace, and there is a Cali Safe Access Delivery Service, and people confuse that with Palm Springs Safe Access. So you'll see a DBA for Forte to change that name- So you'll see a DBA for Forte to change that name, so that I can enter into a delivery market and generate more tax revenue for the city of Palm Springs. Time is of the essence. I'm mixed up with less savory characters in the cannabis space, and I'd like to distinguish myself from those individuals.
And, thank you. And if we could have the, the building owner come up, if you, and please, bring that up to you, so that-
There you go.
How's that? Is that good?
Yes.
May I hear you?
Okay, first of all, just, I wanted to clarify something that Flynn said. If you look at the CCNRs, they give the sign program, and it's, I think it's five and a half feet by one feet. It's not plexiglass, it's wood. It is outdated. All the owners are aware of that. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing is, I, I dropped off, I dropped off earlier, I, I mentioned in the pack, but I didn't include it, we got forgotten, is a, the, what's it called? The Development Committee recommended conditions of approval, which made it through the Planning Commission, the head of planning, and was approved by the city council. And on page four, item five, it says that limited retail uses shall be allowed in Buildings 1, 3, 4, and 11. A floor plan must be approved by the planning director prior to the issuance of a tenant improvement plans. All other buildings shall be used for manufacturing and industrial uses. I don't think, if, if you want to enforce the, the issue of the current sign program from 1991, I honestly don't think the, other than the two front buildings, the owners would mind. I do know, I just want to also make a-
The, I think the only issue in front of us today is the sign program.
Well-
It is the only issue, and if you could keep your comments to that.
I can pretty much guarantee you, within four months or less, we will have a new sign program that I will work with Flynn on and have everybody in agreement with it. Our, if you may, if I may, our main issue is not so much with the size, but the content. The, the codes of the medical cannabis, the 5.35, only allow for the name of the business. Okay? And Flynn has his idea about that, and I have mine. And there's a accountability, trackability with marijuana companies. And the name of the business is Palm Springs Safe Access, Inc. And there should be no other name, and that's for a bunch of legal reasons that we have.
If I could just add one thing-
Please identify yourself.
My, my name is Ann Taskett, and I'm a co-owner. There's actually a trademark application for Forte, which says it will not be associated with a dispensary. So it can't be a DBA and a trademark.
In, in the pack, there's a, there's a document from the trademark office.
Can I ask our attorney to opine on this? Thank you.
I, I think we're getting a bit outside of the issues before the commission at the moment. I think we're veering, I mean, you yourself have identified this as a content issue, with, which is expressly outside of the considerations we should be looking into at the moment. I think the issue of whether or not the signage has to reference the corporate structure of the entity itself is a bit far in the field, and frankly, not an issue. You have any number of corporations doing business that don't reference expressly the type of corporate structure they have in terms of identifying their business. And I think Flynn's summation of what the code requires in terms of identifying a business was in fact intended to make sure that you don't also include signage that identifies product types or varieties, things along those lines. It was intended only to say that a medical cannabis cooperative or dispensary would just identify by a business name. It's not going to have additional signage identifying prices or types of products, services, etc.
Excuse me, but isn't the business name from the business license?
Excuse me, would you-
This goes to the content.
Thank you. Our attorneys opined on that. Thank you.
I think there's an equity issue here. We have a complex where their sign program is clearly and obviously out of date. We have buildings that have signs that have never been before this commission, that would not be approved according to the sign program that we have. I think the only fair thing that we can do at this point is lock in place what exists today and give the parties at that complex an opportunity to come up with a sign program that they can agree with, that we can approve. If they do not come up with a program that we can approve, then we will have to resolve the dispute. But I would prefer that they come up with something that works for all of them. Because I do not think we should be selectively enforcing guidelines against one business versus another. So my motion would be that we leave, that we have a continuance for a period of time. I don't know if four months is the right period of time. And defer any action on this to give the parties sufficient time to come back with a sign program that conforms with city ordinances.
I'll second that motion.
What's the timeframe you're saying?
The owners have suggested four months. I'm satisfied with four months.
And if you have one potential discussion item with that, if I could, is the symbol that's on the current sign, is that disallowed?
That would not be permitted.
That would not be allowed?
No.
Okay, so that would have to be-
To me, that's another issue. I'm looking for the parties to come up with a sign program, and at that point, we will consider that sign program.
I, I have a question about your motion. Does that leave the, the Forte sign off the table until the sign program is approved?
I'm trying to preserve the status quo as it exists today.
For the next, until the sign program is approved?
Allow no other changes until a sign program comes forward.
So we're in effect telling Safe Access that they cannot put a sign up for 120 days?
Cannot put up any new sign, they can keep the existing sign.
They've got a sign there right now.
There is a sign there now?
There is a sign there now. So I'm, I'm suggesting we leave in place all existing signs, and no new signs are erected during this period of four months for the parties to come up with a sign program.
Comment on this?
I agree.
I have one, unless anybody else has.
Go ahead.
And this is a clarification. If we're leaving it in place, we've got two approved signs, which may or may not be conforming, but they were previously approved. So I think they're in place. I, I'm assuming that we're not locking in the unapproved signs, that if they don't come back with this, it's a hodgepodge right now, having looked at it, that we're not, we're not asking code enforcement to go in. But I'm not assuming that we're going to agree to leave in place all of the non-conforming signs that are there, that haven't received city approvals.
And I'm not suggesting that, I'm suggesting that we do not take any action against those non-conforming signs during the four-month period, that we provide the parties an opportunity to come up with a sign program that conforms with city ordinances.
So to restate your motion, you're suggesting continuance for four months to allow the parties to come up with a sign program?
Correct.
And that's a second, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Donenfeld, comment on the motion?
I have a, I have a question. Assuming they come up with a plan, does the plan have to comply with the existing zone with respect to the sign program? Because I do think there are some very unusual circumstances about the location of these, of these units, that would require perhaps some deviations from what is a very restrictive code with respect to signs at this site. So I assume that when they come up with a sign program, if it deviates from the, from the zoning code, which we've seen all the time, we can make judgments accordingly when they're before us.
Per Chapter 93 of the zoning code, it says a sign program may be approved, which varies from the specific limitations of the sign ordinance, if the planning commission finds that due to physical characteristics of the property, etc.
So we have a motion and a second.
I have one more question, just to ask. And still worried about the, the non-compliance with the separate medical marijuana ordinance. Is that a problem for staff to lock that in, to allow that to, part of the sign to continue for this four-month period, or is that a separate issue?
The applicant is on notice that the sign does not conform and would need to be removed upon the resolution of this issue.
That's true.
So in four months, when the sign program is approved, we have signage, then it has to come down.
Okay. But, all right, but the symbol would then be allowed to stay?
No.
For that four-month period?
Nope, the symbol cannot stay.
So, so in terms of the motion, that's a, do you accept that, that we have a four-month continuance, but the symbol has to come down?
No, by that I meant the symbol would come down in four months when the new program is approved.
But not now.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question about that. Is the symbol that we're talking, I know the symbol you're talking about, is that regulated by the sign program? Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. On the sign program or by the cannabis ordinance that controls?
It would be by the cannabis ordinance.
Do we have jurisdiction to make those determinations? Is that within our purview?
Staff has the ability to make that determination.
And can there be deviations? I mean, here's a gentleman who is-
It's quite clear in Chapter Five that it's limited to the name of the business, and it does not permit logos or other things-
With no deviations permitted?
No deviations.
Flynn, just driving around town, I, I certainly have seen other dispensaries that may be in, in non-conformity.
We're hoping to clean that up. So we have a motion and a second. And Flynn, would you restate the motion, so that we're sure we know what motion we're making?
The motion was to continue the appeal for a period of four months, and then to direct the property owners to come back with a sign program for approval by the planning commission. During that four-month period, all remaining existing signs may remain in place. No new sign permits may be issued until the sign program is approved.
Thank you. Could you call the question?
Commissioner, Commissioner Donenfeld?
Yes.
Hirschbein?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kellardine?
Yes.
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero, with one absent.
Moving right along. Commission reports, requests, and comments. I'm just wondering, we've had a request to have, to sit back down before our meeting with city council and go through the, that was, Commissioner Donenfeld, do you want to, that's actually your issue?
Yes, I, Ms. Womack was very much involved in the small lot subcommittee that came up with the 62-plus recommendations regarding PDDs, etc., which was very helpful. But the rest of us are just beginning to get into the learning curve, so to speak, and we certainly all want to be ready for our various two city council questions. And I, my suggestion would be that perhaps we meet at a convenient time between now and the 20th, to just, as a group, go over the issues, review the recommendations, just to freshen our memories, so that we're ready for council when we meet with them on the 20th.
What I might recommend, because we would have to do that as a noticed meeting, we also have to discuss under Director's Business, the AAC interviews. What we might do is combine those two items together on a single work session.
You had suggested getting together for the two interviews, I know. That would make sense.
And is there general agreement that people would like to do this?
Definitely.
In terms of other commissions, it's Director's Business, but we've had sort of chock-full city council meetings dealing with four, four or five projects that we had worked on. And I was wondering if the Director could let us know what happened with those. And they include Serena Park, the development agreement, Boulder, Boulders isn't resolved yet, Canyon, Canyon View, Nexus, and-
Seven fifty lots?
And the Lofts project.
I'd also like to know what's going on with the ANSA, and how many 120-day extensions they can get.
And has the Cameron started?
No, the Cameron has not started. But let me start first with your city council agenda, since that was the first question that was posed to me, of the multitude of questions that are coming my way. Looking first at the June 21st city council agenda, Well in the Desert was on the agenda for that meeting, you all heard that, on June the 14th. City council approved it by a vote of three to two, with additional conditions of approval. One of the things they did was clarify the timeframe for the approval. I had in my notes that it was approved for a period of 24 months with a six-month review. What was actually intended with the maker of the motion was that reviews occur at six months and 24 months. And so that was cleaned up in one of the conditions of approval. And they did adopt your other conditions of approval that you had imposed on the project. And so that item was approved. There was also, let's see, that one was continued. There was also the enclave at Baristo Project. This was the one that was on Baristo and Armosa in Section 14 for the 30 condominium units. The item that went before the city council was the tentative map for the condominiums. However, one of the council members had questions about the architectural design, and so they continued that item. That will go back to city council on the 19th. The applicant has made some minor revisions to the architectural design, which we think will help to enhance the project. Let's see, and I think that was the 21st. Then on the July 5th agenda, let's see, we had the discussions of the Boulder's final map, and city council continued that discussion also to their meeting of the 19th. And so they will discuss that next week. We had the appeal of the Canyon View project. As you'll recall, that was denied by the planning commission by a vote of three to two. That went forward to the city council on July the 5th. After hearing the testimony and reviewing the project, the city council voted to approve the project by a vote of five to two. As part of that, they did, excuse me, five to zero. I don't know where I was coming with the two.
Who were the ghosts?
I'm used to our seven members on planning commission. With that approval, however, they did incorporate the conditions that Commissioner Womack had suggested in the initial motion to approve the project. So those were all included as conditions of approval. I'm sorry, Mr. Kellardine?
Remind me what that, that condition was?
I'm sorry, I don't have the list.
No gates, touching canopy of trees, pedestrian walk-through, I think those were the, oh, and a full-
Solar.
Full solar. They didn't approve, they waived, but with-
With covenant.
With covenants, the street medians, since no other medians were likely to be built soon.
And the undergrounding.
And the undergrounding of the utilities, that was with a covenant, and they also, the widening of the street.
What, can you explain what covenant means? With covenant means?
With a covenant means that they would be compelled to do those improvements at a later point in time, when the city deems that it's necessary, and that those property owners within the development would be responsible for those costs associated.
Would they be bonding, would we be bonding for it, or were they actually, an assessment against the property?
I don't exactly know how they would do that.
And is there any criteria for the city saying now's the time to do that, or is it arbitrary, or how does that work?
The city gets to determine that.
And the city being the city council?
Yes. Going on to the other item that we had on July the 5th, the other appeal was the denial of the Andreas project. That was the one behind Talkwoods Plaza, and that was denied by planning commission. The city council reviewed that case and the testimony that was given, and voted five-zero to deny the appeal. They also found that the architecture of the project and the massing did not meet the city's architectural criteria. They were also concerned, even though that Talkwoods Plaza is a phase of the project, that it wasn't really a mixed-use project. And they felt that mixed-use would be more appropriate there than a single-family project. And so for those reasons, they denied the appeal. And then also, the 750 Lofts was on the July 5th agenda. What the summary of the discussion was, is that the city council has sent the project back to the planning commission with direction that it conformed to the setback and height-limit requirements. So those are the key takeaways from their action on the- So those are the key takeaways from their action on the 750 Lofts.
And how could they do that? When did they rescind their earlier approvals? Because that's the basis on which they...
They rescinded three of the five resolutions and ordinance that approved the project back in April of this year, when the discussion on how to deal with the judgment on the case was first presented to the City Council. The other item, on July the 6th, there was a special City Council meeting. At that council meeting, they discussed the development agreement for Serena Park. I'm going to give you the short version of the story, in that they generally agreed with the suggested terms of the agreement. However, they did want a performance schedule attached to the development agreement. There was some discussion on the timeframe. You all, as the Planning Commission, had recommended the 20-year timeframe with the five-year escalation clause for the fees. City Council was fine with the escalation clause. They were a little bit uncomfortable with the 20-year timeframe, and I believe that's one of the reasons why they did request the performance schedule as part of the development agreement. That is intended to go forward to the City Council. I can't remember if it is on the agenda for the 26th or the 19th, but it will be at a...
And the resolution on the fee that is the replacement fee in Chino Canyon for the open space?
They are going to refer that to Subcommittee, but what was discussed was a $3 million fee.
And under what timeframe?
The applicant had indicated that they couldn't do it any sooner than three years, and so that's something that the Subcommittee will review.
What was the final resolution or the most recent resolution on the third access question?
The City Council left that to the direction of staff, and how I believe we'll resolve that is Francis Drive will be an emergency point of access for the development.
At the barrel exit point?
Well, where Francis Drive comes into the project.
Oh, there would be no access, no emergency access even at the point where Whitewater Drive?
No. No.
Would there be any pedestrian access at that point?
At Farrell?
No, at where Whitewater Drive enters on the west.
I don't believe that they would have the ability to do that. They would have to work with the Homeowners Association and the Whitewater Country Club.
I noticed they went through a, I'm just a little frustrated because they went through a full vote with the, what is the southerly big association there, Four Seasons, to get the access at the south.
For Golden Sands, yes.
Golden Sands access, but they don't seem to want to go up to the vote for that other third access.
The Golden Sands was a little bit easier in terms of dealing with one association versus five associations. And it was also critical to the success of the project on the north end of the project, that they really wouldn't be able to go forward without it. So those were the recent items on City Council agendas.
Timing, if you can let us know about timing on the Architectural Advisory Committee interviews, when are those scheduled for?
We have not scheduled those yet. I sent an email to you late yesterday, looking at either the 19th or the 20th, which would be next week. Mr. Hudson is back, I believe. I can't remember if he gets back on the 19th, but he said he would be available on the 20th. So that might be the best opportunity for us to do interviews. We could schedule that perhaps at 1:00 in the afternoon, if that would be an appropriate time for you all.
And then we are scheduling a discussion?
1:00, that would be problematic for me.
What might be a better time for everyone?
The, 1 to 2 is the hour that I can't do it on that day.
What day are we talking about?
Thursday, the 20th.
Bless you. The other, the City Council meeting is on the evening of the 20th. Would it be better if we perhaps did it at 10:00 in the morning on the 20th?
Well, aren't we doing the meeting about the PDD that day also?
We will do those together as a combined special meeting of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I'm open in the morning.
I'm open in the morning.
10 would work for me.
Okay, so there seems to be general agreement. We will go ahead and do a special meeting of the Planning Commission on July the 20th at 10:00 AM in the morning. We will send out a meeting notice to you identifying the room where that will occur. We have two applicants for AAC. We will invite them to be there. We'll do the interviews first with the applicants for AAC at 10:00, and then continue with your discussion on the PDD ordinance immediately following that. And so we'll go ahead and schedule that for you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I still have a question about the ONSA, and is, what's happening here?
Unfortunately, I don't have anything concrete on that one.
So there's no time limit for them in terms of continuance?
Ultimately, there's a time limit on the building permit, but I don't know what that date and time is.
Okay, thank you.
Would that be City Council action or your action in terms of if at some point it extended too long and you deemed it noncompliant?
Ultimately, that would go to the City Council at some point in time. One of the issues is if they don't complete the construction, we do have bonds for the offsite improvements that need to be addressed. City Council would need to deal with that matter if construction does not continue and the building permits expire.
When does it become a safety issue?
I don't know. The Building and Safety Department would need to answer that question.
I have one question on the Orchid Tree Development. There was a question regarding the room count, and you were going to be working with the developer on getting some documentation to support a higher room count. Any progress in that area?
There has not been any documentation produced yet that would substantiate the number of rooms that they're requesting, but we are happy to continue working with them.
So the project is on hold, basically?
They can build at the number of units that they are approved for.
Is there, are they, they submitted building permits?
They have not yet, no.
I have a question. Flynn, I brought this up a couple of meetings ago, but this is about the subcommittees that have not met yet, one of them being the Downtown Landscape Project and the other one being the Dream Hotel.
On the Downtown Landscape Project, we are waiting for direction from the City Council Subcommittee in terms of when they would like to meet on that. They are the ones who set the meeting for us. On the other one, the Dream Hotel, I'll go ahead and contact Mr. Robertson to see if Ms. Kibby is back, and we will try and get that set up as quickly as we can.
Okay, because you know our concern that they're forging ahead on construction documents, it's going to be more difficult for them to modify the project if there's a request by the Subcommittee to do that.
And on the Downtown Project, they, they're already going ahead and doing some things that we're supposed to have answers on. I think it was the trees and whether or not they had...
And Mr. Newell didn't respond to you?
No.
Okay, I will ask him to do that.
So that's not just a Subcommittee of Planning, it's also City Council and Planning Subcommittee?
The Downtown Landscape Subcommittee?
Well, we approved the landscape plan subject to final design on the shade structures and the fountains and maybe a couple of other things.
The City Council needs to see those items as well. The members of the Subcommittee need to see those items as well.
We actually referred it to a joint Subcommittee.
Oh, it was a joint Subcommittee, okay, thank you.
No further, oh, I wanted, is it, when does it become official? Do we wait to the next City Council meeting for an official appointment of the two members that are being appointed to the commission?
I should know the answer to that, but I don't. But you're here and you're serving, so we would like to welcome Mr. Hirschbein and Ms. Middleton for another term here on the Planning Commission. Congratulations. Thank you for reminding me, I should have announced that.
There was something you wanted me to remind you of, and I forgot what that was. It's this, that, okay.
At least you remembered to remind me. One of the things that we passed out in your packet the last time, but I forgot to discuss because I'm a little forgetful at times, is the attendance schedule for the AAC meetings for the upcoming 2017, 2018 fiscal year. I put this out as a suggested schedule. If there are changes, if we could discuss that now, if there are any months that are problematic for some of you in terms of where I have you fit into the schedule?
It works for me.
Can I?
Works for me.
It's fine for me.
It's sometimes hard to project that far ahead.
True, but we are always happy to make adjustments in the schedule as needed as things do come up for the members of the Planning Commission. So again, we can revise that, but if everyone's satisfied with the dates as they are currently, we'll go ahead and publish that for you. And then again, if you need to make changes during the course of the year, we're more than happy to accommodate. Let's see, and under Director's Business, is, is there any more Commission business? Okay, under Director's Business, I think I've run out of everything that we were to talk about. We've talked about the schedule. We've talked about the Joint Planning Commission City Council meeting. Just so that you're aware, that will start at 6:00 PM here at the Convention Center. There is the discussion on the Downtown Park first before we go into the Joint Planning Commission City Council session. It's felt that it would be very beneficial to have all the Planning Commissioners there for the discussion of the park, so we hope that you will participate in that as well. And then again, we'll go right into the discussion.
And do you have the surveys back?
I don't know. I haven't seen them yet. We have a meeting later today with the Park Subcommittee, and hopefully we'll have more information on that. In terms of the joint meeting, we will be talking about the recommendations of the ad hoc PDD Committee, and so we're forwarding the documentation that you all received as part of your Planning Commission with the recommendations and then all of the backup information and public comments. So they'll have the same packet of materials that you all received.
And where we haven't approved the minutes of that meeting, there were a few changes?
Correct, and those will be reflected.
And those will be in it?
Yeah.
There's a Park Subcommittee meeting today?
For the City Council members, yes.
Okay, because there was a Park Subcommittee that included other...
The new council hasn't called that back into, into existence?
So unless there's anything else, oh, one other thing I just wanted to mention, sorry. I will not be in attendance at your July 26 meeting. Mr. Robertson will be the lead staff member for that agenda. Unfortunately, I will be in Hawaii.
Oh, swimming.
Very sorry to hear that.
I'm not sure we can meet without you, Flynn.
See you in September.
So with that, we will adjourn the meeting and...
Oh, we are adjourning, we are adjourning to a...
10:00 AM on the...
A 10:00 AM on the 20th?
On the 20th.
Will that be here, will that be in the Convention Center?
Excuse me?
Will it be in the Convention Center?
Yes, you will be in the Convention Center, and then you are dark in the month of August. Enjoy your vacation.
Meeting on the 20th will be in the Convention Center as well.
The Joint Planning Commission City Council, the, the special meeting will be at City Hall.
Oh, it will be at City Hall?
Yes, for the special meeting, not for the joint.
But 10:00 means at City Hall?
Yeah, the conference room.
The development conference room?
That's really how I want to run it, because I think I want to give everybody a chance to comment.
So the 10:00 meeting is at City Hall?
In the development conference room.
You talk about that?
Yeah.
Randy, you brought a jacket.
Understand.
I'm not today, I was okay. I was amazed.
And a 6:00...
I'm starting to walk out that door, of course, stripped down to shorts.